Join the committee. The pleasure, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I am giving notice that this meeting is being electronically recorded. First, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Jan Peterman, who was a special education teacher at the Attleboro Public Schools for 35 years. And our thoughts and prayers go out to the Peterman family at this time. Moving on to open forum. Open forum is a time when members of the public may address the school committee. Open forum is not a time for committee members to engage in dialogue with members of the public. Guidelines for open forum are available to you at the podium. Please, though, will be interested in what you have to say but cannot respond with background information on your issue. Please come forward to the podium and state your aim and address for the record. We have nobody wishes to speak in open forum. Okay, this time I'm going to close open forum. Next hour on agenda is an approval of the minutes from October 7, 2013. So moved. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stand. Motion passes. Moving on to our consent agenda. We have a motion to accept the donation in the amount of $90 from ETS to Attleboro High School Gifts Donations Account. So moved. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stand. Motion passes. We have a motion to accept the donation in the amount of $36 from Target Take Charge of Education to the Attleboro High School Gifts Donations Account for general use. So moved. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stand. Motion passes. We have a motion to accept the donation in the amount of $38 from Contra's Worlds to Skills USA at the high school. So moved. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stand. Motion passes. We have a motion to accept the donation in the amount of $1,000 from the New England Patriots Foundation to the football team. So moved. Discussion. I think just to add, the New England Patriots have been very good to Attleboro Athletics lately, and we thank them for everything they do. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stand. Motion passes. We have a motion to accept the donation in the amount of $17.60 from the Coca-Cola to the Hill Roberts Elementary School for deposit in the Gifts Donations Account. So moved. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stand. Motion passes. We have a motion to accept the donation in the amount of $169 from Target to the Hill Roberts Elementary School for deposit in the Gifts Donations Line. So moved. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stand. Motion passes. We have a motion to accept the donation in the amount of $97 from Target to the Koella Middle School for deposit in the Gifts Donations Line. So moved. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stand. Motion passes. We have a motion to accept the donation in the amount of $5,000 from the Feinstein Foundation for deposit in the Studly Gifts Donations Account. So moved. Discussion.
Probably generous gift.
I couldn't agree more. I mean, this has been a great partnership for the Studly Elementary School. I believe Mr. Feinstein was over at that school last, was it last week?
Last Thursday, Friday?
Yeah. But very generous foundation, and the kids are really excited when he comes into the building, I can tell you that.
Excellent.
Pursuant to Mass General Law 53A. Oh, sorry.
The motion. All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stand. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Patato. Pursuant to Mass General Law 53A and a half, a motion to accept and forward to the city council for approval the following tangible property item from the Hill Roberts PTO to the Hill Roberts Elementary School. Eight iPads for classroom instruction on estimated value of $3,192. So moved. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stand. Motion passes. Pursuant to Mass General Law 53A and a half, a motion to accept and forward to the city council for approving the following tangible property item from the Sieve Sum Fund with the Huntington Theater Group and Boston Universities at Willett and Luntory Schools. Three V-Sonic Flat Panel Monitors, estimated value of $69 each. One Acer Flat Panel Monitor, estimated value of $69. One Dell Flat Panel Monitor, estimated value of $60. Two Dell Flat Panel Monitors, estimated value of $64 each. Two Dell Flat Panel Monitors, estimated value of $74 each. And one Hewlett Packard Monitor, estimated value of $75. So moved. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stand. Motion passes. We have a motion to approve the field trip proposal for 16 to 18 grade 10 through 12 Attleboro High School students to attend the leadership conference at the Best Western in Marlborough from 11/26 through 11/26, funded and transported by parents. So moved. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stand. Okay, I've got another item under the consent agenda, and it's going to be a student advisory report, and it's going to be by our representative from the school committee, Mr. David Murphy and our student rep, Mr. Max Lancaster. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll defer to Mr. Lancaster, who just co-chaired a meeting of the Student Advisory Council a few minutes ago.
Sure, yeah, we actually just finished up, and the meeting was as much of a check-in as it was anything else. Basically, we, briefly, we confirmed the need for student involvement in a Wi-Fi-based initiative that we came up with for an idea. We discussed basic logistics and then, like, things such as a necessary cultural shift in order to integrate Wi-Fi into the community, into the district. So it was the topic of the day for today.
Yeah, and the only thing I would add, Mr. Chairman, is that the Student Advisory Council independently and correctly identified the need to, for technology initiatives to be a priority for the district, and they indicated to the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and myself their desire to contribute to that. And we'll be working in the weeks ahead to determine exactly what that contribution might look like. And also, they also expressed interest in renewing the sophomore seminar, which was a program initiated by Mr. Lancaster's predecessors.
Thank you, David. Max, yeah, obviously, we are looking at the technology, if we're looking at it under a microscope, as Mr. Sheen can attest to that, there's already been a couple meetings on that, so obviously, we want to hear from the students. You guys probably know better than all of us what you need to best succeed here at the Attleboro High School. So again, I want to thank you, Max and David, for that presentation. Thanks, Lex. My next item on the new business is the transportation. We have a motion to approve the business manager's recommendation to utilize 28 buses for the transportation of students, and to inform the mayor of this approval. If I can just have a second on the motion. Before we have discussion, Tom Rose is not here today. He is on, has personal business, I believe that he's on. So I'm going to let our superintendent, Mr. Sheen, give us a little background information on why this motion is in front of the committee, and then we'll open up to committee members' comments.
As you know, that we've had numerous concerns with regard to transportation since the start of the school year. And although the Transportation Department has tried very diligently to try to make it a go with 27 buses, we still have students that are leaving school later. We have students who are exceeding the 45-minute transportation hour going home, and we also have students who are coming into school later, which interferes with not just education time but also free and reduced breakfast time, et cetera. So consequently, Mr. Rose and the transportation people got together with myself and said that we've tried everything, we've looked at numerous scenarios, and the contract with the bus company and the city, in fact, calls for 29 buses. We currently have 27 buses on the road. We're asking at this time, in order to alleviate some of the concerns we have, that extra bus would work at that particular time. We still have a number of parents who have paid for free and fee-for-service transportation, which we have not been able to accommodate. This will provide some of that relief, but we still have people that we will not be able to accommodate with regard to fee-for-service. Therefore, we will be in the next few weeks looking at a cost-benefit analysis of how we're going to approach the additional people for fee-for-service, which becomes greater every single month. So right now, we're looking at the school committee to approve the additional bus that makes it from 27 to 28, and in fact, you have 29 in the contract.
Okay. Mr. Parent?
Yeah, I guess my, not so much with the words of motion, but the fact that we need to make a motion. I would think that since the city council did approve a contract for 29 buses, that our business manager could just go ahead and make it 28 rather than tie his hands and waste any additional time with motions. I think in the future, as the contract calls 29, Tom should be alleviated that 29 buses to use as best he's fit. I don't think we need to hold up a process by making these motions. Just my initial thoughts.
I take the direction from the school committee and the bottom line is if that's the way you'd like to do it in the future, I certainly would, would like to be able to operate under that type of guideline.
Yeah, because Tom, Tom-
It's expeditious, and I think it's the best way to move.
Yeah, because I don't know when Tom, I mean, we had the finance meeting not too long ago, so it's been a short timeframe. Let's say if Tom needs a 29 bus, and we don't have another meeting for another month, I think Tom should have the ability to do that, since we've already approved a contract for 29 buses. Of course, Tom would always keep us informed, so we know it's happened, so we know it's taking our surprise, but I just don't feel that we should hold a process like this by making motions and waiting for school committee meetings.
And, Mr. Parent, it just so happens that the school committee, we weren't prepared to do this until the earliest, the end of this week, to put all the pieces together, but it just fell in place that way. That's not to say it's going to fall in place like that all the time, so to be able to have that leeway of putting that other bus on would be very helpful.
I would prefer, maybe we could possibly amend the motion-
Just to expedite this.
-to allow Tom to use the 29th bus if he needs to.
Ms. Crowe?
I agree with Mr. Parent on that one, because if we do have the contract, and it states in the contract that we can have up to 29 buses, I don't think we should have to make the motion, because we know, of course, you wouldn't utilize the extra buses unless they were absolutely necessary.
Mr. Murphy?
I don't have any issue with the sentiment that Mr. Parent's expressed with regard to providing the administration with that flexibility. I think the question would be, how specific was any language in both the contract and previously passed motions? If the committee had passed motions in the past, and I don't have every motion that we've passed with regard to the transportation fleet in this term in front of me right now, but if we've passed motions in the past that could in any way be perceived to have controlling language that indicate that there are 27 buses, in that case, I think that Mr. Rose would have to come back to the committee for approval of that. It doesn't seem to me like there would be much of an issue if we just made sure that that initial language was specific enough to provide that flexibility from the outset. But in this instance, because I think at best, the line of authority is ambiguous, we'd be on safer ground to vote for this, and then be mindful of that in the future that if, because ultimately, although the contract allows for that, there is a budgetary impact of using the bus. So that is the, I think, would be the rationale as to why an additional vote would be necessary, but we could provide for that on sort of the front end and understand that the administration has that flexibility. I don't have strong feelings on it in one way or another. I just think it's something that we'd want to be mindful of from the very beginning, and I don't know that we were as specific as we would want to be from the beginning in order to grant that authority to the administration.
Mr. Toddle?
So Lieutenant Sheen, I had a question. What is your opinion on fee-for-service?
Well, I, I think, I think the intent is well met. I think that when you're looking at parents being able to get their children to school and utilize a fee-for-service, which may alleviate some lateness to school, or in fact, students enhancing their attendance to school, I think it's very good. What the fee-for-service has done is added over 550 kids into our bus fleet every single year. So that creates a dilemma in itself. So you're looking at, what are the bus stops? You're looking at what is the condition of the overcrowding on the buses? So you have all of that additional pieces that are added to transportation every single year. I think it's something that we will be addressing very, very shortly with regard to the transportation issue as a whole and as a committee. And during some of those discussions and to confront the transportation issues at hand, in fact, I think the fee-for-service has to be discussed as a board.
Mr. Lawson?
Just going back to the original motion, I think with some of the conversations we've had at the finance subcommittee meetings and also at this level, and with the issues that we had last spring, I believe, I believe we told the city council that we would keep them abreast as to what we were doing with the different buses, and I think part of this motion was to fulfill that statement that we told them that we would keep them informed. So I think we should be able to use the buses that are within the contract as we need them, but I also think that with what's happened in the past, I think it's good for communication and good for everybody's transparency just to go through some of these actions, so.
I think you're correct, Bill, because in speaking with Tom, it was more, I'm not sure the motion was actually called for, but it probably is the right way to do it. Tom, I think, only wanted the respective stating, he did state at one time that he would use the proper channels and chain of command, if you will, by going through the finance committee, then the full committee notifying the mayor and the city council. So I think that's what he's still looking to do, even though we're expediting it. And I'll have to say, Mr. Sheen, and I know we talk about it a lot, but my opinion is, if we had the model or the platform made for Aspen to do this, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about this in November. Matter of fact, we wouldn't be probably sitting here talking about it in August. It would have already been taken care of. So again-
I agree.
-just comes back to haunt. I can understand with the fee for transportation, because I believe this is the first time since I can recall that we have not been able to accommodate anyone who's asked for free for service. So that is going to be a change, and we do have to look into the pros and cons of that. And when you create first, obviously, we're going to hear about why that, you know, we have to have good rationale for why that first is going to occur.
Right.
So again, I think going forward, I think the plan that is being put in place now by the administration is going to alleviate the majority of this transportation concern for next year easily, so, and I hope to see that come to be, if you will, Mr. Sheen.
Mm-hmm. It will. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stand. Motion passes. Moving on to our personnel report, Assistant Superintendent, David Shale. Welcome, Dave.
Good evening. I have a couple of items for you tonight. The first is retirement. Antonio Tavaras, custodian at Hyman Fine. I have three resignations. Sonia Walmsley, ELL and McKinney Vento Coordinator for Central Office. Lauren McDonald, a teacher at, especially in the Insights Program at Willett. And Casey McNamara, a special related paraprofessional at Willett. I also have two appointments. Shell Noe, a Braille Specialist for the District. And Jonathan Noguera, a paraprofessional at the high school.
Any questions? Can we just go down?
Here's a quick question. How hard is it going to be to replace the coordinator of ELL? And do we really have one in mind, or are we interviewing right now?
That topic will be discussed on the Personnel and Executive Session.
Okay.
To answer your question directly, we will advertise appropriately for a position that will encompass ESL, ELL, as well as McKinney Vento.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Shale.
Thank you.
Moving on to committee reports. Finance Subcommittee, Phil Pyromus, Subcommittee, Mr. Parent?
Okay. Got a couple of, we've got three motions to bring forward today. First motion is to approve the budget transfer request by the business manager in the amount of $437,199.
So moved.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Extentions? None? Motion passes. Second motion, to approve the three invoices for fiscal year 13, moving forward into the city council. Discussion. All.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to mention regarding the Whetsons, the reimbursement for the food loss, I have spoken to the superintendent, and moving forward, any kind of contract, we might want to look into that, because there is a clause in the contract that states that, I believe it was either $25,000 or more, is something that we can go back on our insurance to maybe cover these losses, which as of right now, there's no clause, well, it's the $25,000 clause, but I think in the future, we need to look at that, because this could add up big time. And so that's something on contracts moving forward, when they're up for renewal or any kind, that, that's something I did mention to you and Mr. Rose, that we need to look at, because that could cost, you know, the district costly.
I made a note in the current contract, and I highlighted that.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Correct me wrong, Barbara or Bill. I think Tom said that he actually went to the insurance, but it was deductible, it was below a deductible. He tried to get it.
Right, yeah, it has to be like $25,000 or more, right. Yep. But moving forward, I know, speaking with them, that that can be something that we can watch in the clause that we have into the contract. Thank you.
Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Extentions? None? Motion passes. Next motion is to approve the most up-to-date transportation report to the city council.
So moved. I think we have the table, this motion, the transportation clause.
Well, he's, well, he's going to send the October 31 report, because we send the monthly report. It's got the October 31 in that package.
Right.
So I think going forward, it would be updated. But it's in the October month-end report.
It's as of the 31st where this is now.
This will be going forward.
So it'll be, they'll have it updated in November for the council.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I didn't get to run that part by Tom Rose, but.
We did, we reviewed it at the finance subcommittee meeting, and it was, it was in line, and we approved it.
All right, as long as you guys are following it.
Special discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? None? Motion passes. All right, I've got some bills and warrants to read and to record. First one, dated October 9, 2013, the amount $275,289.35. Appropriations $228,964.16. Federal state grants $18,302.12. Vowing funds of $27,983.26. Incumbent funds $2990. Next one dated October 16, 2013, the amount $160,495.50. Occumances of $56,141.90. Special funds $6,129.05. Federal state grants $51,859.34. Vowing funds of $46,365.21. Next one, in the amount, I'm sorry, dated October 23, 2013, the amount $518,302.27. Appropriations of $508,156.40. Special funds $2,110.60. Federal state grants $1,706.20. Vowing funds of $6,802.61. Final one dated October 30, 2013, the amount $444,094.59. Appropriations $227,320.11. Special funds of $1,952.75. Federal state grants $1,472.86. Vowing funds of $213,340.87. The next finance meeting will be held on November 20 at 7:00 p.m., and that concludes our business.
Thank you, Mr. Parent. Moving on to Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee, Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The curriculum Subcommittee met on October 8. We had quite the meeting, so please forgive me if I'm long. Our first subject of discussion was that Mr. Rooney wanted to clear up any confusion about parent-teacher conferences, as mentioned in the press. They went to an open house format and allowing parents to use the Aspen portal. At the open house, he demonstrated how Aspen portal was used. He said that participation in the open house was very good, and that they would like to continue using this format. They think it's very successful, and so they're going to continue using the open house and Aspen as a check-in. So basically, Aspen is updated by faculty every two weeks, so that parents can keep an up-to-date eye on what their kids are up to. Let's see. And then, Mr. Rooney continued on guidance coordination. He explained that Julie Little was brought on as guidance coordinator. She was already in the guidance department, so she understood what needed to be done in this position. Adding the guidance coordinator provides students with the better ability to follow up on what their guidance counselors are doing, and there's better coordination and level work among the guidance department. Mrs. Little is in the process of going through everything to create consistency among all three houses. She is big on communication and using Aspen again to keep in touch with parents. Excuse me. She is also working on events and timelines for everything related to high school guidance and reaching out to eighth-grade middle school students, not just in the system but outside the system as well. Oh, she also mentioned that guidance is looking, looking to bring back Alumni Day, and that should be something we, we look into as time goes by. The Subcommittee was informed that filling this position did not cost the district additional funds, by the way. Mr. Bowles gave a presentation on the special schedule at Koella Middle School. I don't know if you guys remember, last year, they started a sort of experiment using specials in 25-day rotation. He updated us on that. He says it's going very well. It allows faculty to coordinate specials with other instruction in the, in the building. It also allows them to coordinate instruction with after-school activities as well, so. So that's going very well, and of course, MCAS scores have improved at Koella. Hard to say that that's what did the job, but, you know, the experimentation and trying these things out on a school-by-school basis definitely makes sense. Following that, Ms. McCarthy gave a presentation on special education, basically covering how special education works in the system. She noted that they have built a procedural manual to direct both within the system and I think the hope is to put it online. Is that correct? Yeah. So the, the hope is to put that online as well, to make it easier for parents to understand the IEP process and how special education works in the system. She explained timelines, the review processes, how mediation works. It was a very informative, very thorough presentation, and you should review your curriculum instruction minutes if you have any questions. Please let me know. That pretty well covers everything for now, and concludes my report. Our next meeting will be held in December. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Moving on to Policy Subcommittee, Ms. Patato.
Mr. Chairman, I have no business to report at this time. The next meeting will be held on November 25, 2013, in this room at 7:00 p.m. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Very good. This time, I want to make a motion to take a five-minute break and then enter to Executive Session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and discuss deployment of security personnel or strategies with respect thereto. It will not be convenient in open session.
Cuckers.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Patato?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Eaton?
Yes.
Yes.
Surprise, Mike.
Take the five minutes. This time, I want to make a motion to take a five-minute break and then enter to executive session, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and discuss deployment of security personnel or strategies with respect thereto. It will not be a convenient and open session. Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Patato?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler, yes.
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 Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Eater?
Yes.
Yes. Surprise, surprise, Mike.
Taking five minutes.